Call to you at Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for December the 3rd, 6:00 PM. Recognize for Pledge of Allegiance Commissioner Jeff Peel. I'll do the invocation, if we would, stand and we'll pray.
Lord, we come to you today, we thank you for this good day you've given to us. Thank you for many blessings. Would I pray to guide our minds and thoughts tonight? We make wise decisions as we make decisions to move Alexander County forward. Be with each person that's here. Would I pray for those that have been serving, those that are serving the first time, those that are re-elected? Help each one. Would pray for protection for our county, our citizens, especially for employees and EMS, Emergency Services, Sheriff and Police Department, Highway Patrol, Fire Departments. Would protect all of those as they go about their business protecting us each day. Would be with each person tonight, give them a safe trip back to their homes. And would just thank you for it, in our name of prayer. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just a little different in our meeting tonight. I'd like to call on Judge Dale Graham, who will come up and give the oath of office for the Board of Education and then for the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a great pleasure for me and an honor to be here to conduct this swearing-in ceremony. I would just like to say that these people who will receive an oath tonight, they're here not for personal glory, or certainly not for the money, they're here because they want to make a difference. And, you know, this is where it happens, they make hard decisions and they work hard. And I think the people who are here on a regular basis really understand that. So I congratulate them in advance and again, I know you're going to do your best, all of you, to further our community and our county. All right? With that being said, I think we're going to do first the Board of Education. All right? So the three members, Matt Cooksey, David Odom, and Harry Schrum. If you'll come up here and if you've got someone here to hold the Bible for you, or you can hold your own, however you care to do it. All right. If you'll place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
Bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina
and the constitutional powers and authorities
And the constitutional powers and authorities
which are or may be
Which are or may be
established
Established
for the government thereof
For the government thereof
and that I will endeavor
That I will endeavor
to support, maintain, and defend
To support, maintain, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will truly execute
That I will truly execute
the duties of the Board of Education
The duties of the Board of Education
of Alexander County
Alexander County
according to the best of my skill and ability
According to the best of my skill and ability
and according to law
According to the law
so help me God
So help me God
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think our next order of business is to swear in our county commissioners. We've got three. Marty Pennell will be our first and his family. If you want to step up here and you've got some of your Bible, or I've got a Bible here if you need one. Sometimes they like, people like to use their family Bibles, which is always special. You look great. That's great. Okay. All right. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and if you'll repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers and authorities
To the constitutional powers and authorities
which are or may be established
Which are or may be established
for the government thereof
For the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
Maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
I will well and truly
execute the duties
Execute the duties
of the Office of County Commissioner
Of the Office of County Commissioner
for Alexander County
For Alexander County
according to the best of my skill and ability
To the best of my skill and ability
according to the law
According to the law
so help me God
So help me God
congratulations. Our next Commissioner-elect will be Ronnie Reese. So Ronnie and his family want to step up here? We've got several with you.
Yeah. We'll build a voice.
All right. I'm not sure everybody can get their hand on that Bible, but they can, they can get close anyway. All right. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
And to the constitutional powers
and authorities
And authorities
which are or may be established
Which are or may be established
for the government thereof
For the government thereof
and that I will endeavor
And I will endeavor
to support, maintain, and defend
To support, maintain, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
I will well and truly
execute the duties
Execute the duties
of the Office of County Commissioner
Of the Office of County Commissioner
for Alexander County
For Alexander County
according to the best of my skill and ability
According to the best of my skill and ability
and according to law
And according to law
so help me God
So help me God
congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, Commissioner-elect Larry Yoder. Yeah, have them both hold it. That'd be great, yeah. All right. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. You want to put, you want to help hold it if you'd like?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. If you'll repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
And to the constitutional powers
and authorities
And authorities
which are or may be established
Which are or may be established
for the government thereof
For the government thereof
and that I will endeavor
And that I will endeavor
to support
To support
maintain and defend
Maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
So help me God
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
That I will well and truly
execute the duties
Execute the duties
of the Office of County Commissioner
Of the Office of County Commissioner
for Alexander County
For Alexander County
according to the best of my skill and ability
According to the best of my skill and ability
and according to the law
And according to the law
so help me God
So help me God
congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our swearing-in ceremonies. I would just like to say one other thing before I leave. I couldn't help but notice that our honorable Benjamin Hines is here, our Register of Deeds, passed, just passed. I'd like to see the stand-up, if you would, Ben. He's done an outstanding job for us for 32 years.
It's been an honor as people like you so are the story of my life. It all begins with you. Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. You've been a great asset. Now, we know Scott will do a great job, but you'll never quite fill your shoes, I suspect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Graham. Thank you. Okay. And going along kind of with that, this time Jeff Peel will recognize the honorable Mr. Benjamin Hines, if you'll stand.
This is quite an honor for me to be able to recognize my good friend and former neighbor, Ben Hines. Ben was elected as Alexander County Register of Deeds in 1986. Think back, what were you doing in 1986? That's been a day or two ago. And he has served faithfully for the last 32 years. During his tenure, he has become the fixture of the Register of Deeds office and is well-known and easily recognized throughout the county and state. Ben has been involved in many county projects over the years, such as 150th Anniversary Celebration, where he organized the refurbishing of the bell originally placed at the courthouse in 1902 to create the bell tower that now stands on the courthouse lawn today. Ben can always be counted on to assist with any program or event to recognize the veterans in our county, and the Annual Veterans Day Program is no exception. Each year, he works directly with the County Veteran Service Office along with the, excuse me, VFW, DAV, American Legion, and organizations to prepare for this program in an effort to honor our veterans. Ben has been instrumental in the construction of three new flagpoles between the County Administration's Social Services Building that now fly United States, North Carolina, and Alexander County flags. This site will also be future home to the Charters of Freedom monuments to be placed by a nonprofit group. Ben serves on the committee tasks with soliciting donations for the monuments. Speaking of flags, Ben can always be counted on to provide state flags for community events such as the Independence Celebration and other things. Ben was the grand marshal of the 72nd Annual Alexander County Christmas Parade held this past Saturday, an event that he has attended not one time or two times, but more than 30 times. He is also a member of the Ellendale Ruettans, is active at First Baptist Church, and is present at every fundraiser, event, and festivity in the county, which serves as a great example of Ben's commitment to community. We would like to thank Ben for his outstanding services, Register of Deeds, for 32 years, and wish him the best of luck in the future. I have a plaque, and I'd like to break this open and read it to you. Says, "Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Benjamin W. Hines in recognition and appreciation of 32 years of dedicated service as Alexander County Register of Deeds, 1986 to 2018, presented December 3rd, 2018." Thank you, Ben.
Get that out of your way.
Ben said he would like to share a word or two.
I just want to say that we're here tonight celebrating the election process. There's two on the board right now that in a blink of the eye, they'll be doing the same thing. Those four-year terms come around real fast. It's just like you get through one, turn around, you're doing another one. But I did, in the military, I had it in groups of four. You had enlist for four years, and I did that many times. I've done that eight times as a Register of Deeds. There's been a whole lot of times of getting signs and putting them up and trying to run. And what I would like to say is 19 is my favorite number. And I'll not go into the detail of why 19 is my favorite number, but there's a lot of reasons why that 19 becomes my favorite number. But behind me right now is the county manager. He's in his 19th year. And in a blink of the eye, a blink of the eye, he'll be standing here one night telling all y'all how he felt about Alexander County, and it just goes around so fast. So, Mr. French, it'll be a while yet, we hope, but the day will come when you're standing here and you get mixed feelings about it. But it's just, when you think back of the years and the different people you've met, things that you've got, had an opportunity to do, and we've gone from way back in the Register of Deeds office and the county commission has permitted us to have the funds that we needed to acquire advancing. Our books are repaired. And so my son, Skon, has taken over with the books all repaired, updated, optically imaged, all the way to the, back to the beginning. And I've just been honored to get to do that, and I want to make sure you know and it's clear to you that the commissioners allowed me to do that by funding the projects we had. So they get to get in the act too. So if you look at those books up there, if you go home tonight and look at your internet and look at Alexander County and look at the land records, you need to look back at them, that they allowed us to have funds to defray the cost of doing that. So let's give them a hand. And I just bid you farewell, and it's not going to be quite like the old soldier that never dies, who just fade away, but I'll still be out there. And I'm going to be out there for one big reason. I'm going to make sure Scott does his job right and proper. Thank you all so much. You're part of my family.
Appreciate your service. This time, I'm
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, I didn't know Ben until I ran for County Commissioner how many ever years ago? It was 2008, and, but I've gotten to know him very well since then, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you, sir. And you're a great person, great Alexander County, Alexander Cowian, so we appreciate you. Thanks.
Okay. This time, I've got, I guess, the privilege of hiring a couple of men that actually I came on board with four years ago. It don't seem like it's been too long, but Milton Campbell and Josh Lael. I read just a few things that's happened since they've been on the board, some of the achievements. Mitchell Gold, Natural Gas Line was extended to there, Phase 2 of Rocky Face Park, renaming the Law Enforcement Center, a member of Sheriff Alasha Bever, evidence storage facility for Sheriff's Office, completion of Bethlehem Ellendale Water, CVCC Applied Technology Projects, construction of a shale building in industrial park, and that led to the recruitment of Borealis compounds. Sure Tape Sewer Line, broadband feasibility study, and we're still moving forward on that. Renovation of the former Community One Bank property, that's coming along real good. Demolition of the Dayton property and a rotary stage is going to be, you know, taking place there before long. Stony Point Elementary School Sewer Line, industrial pump, park, pump station replacement, reorganization of the Building Inspections Department, and we received some loans for the sewer in Bethlehem and completion of water lines throughout the county, and a whole lot of other things, and I'd call them to come forward to meet me at the podium. And I hope it's kind of been enjoyable for them. I think we've done a whole lot of stuff. It's been great to serve with these two guys. Kind of hate to see them come off, but, you know, that's their option and their choice. And got two plaques here for them, and it says, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Milton Campbell and to Josh Lael." He says the same thing. "In recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service as an Alexander County Commissioner, 2014 to 2018, presented on December the 3rd, 2018." Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate you, sir.
You got to give a little speech or something. And like I say, it's been, been good to serve with these guys. Actually, served with them on the Board of Education a couple of times there, so we made some trips together and a whole lot of things, and I just appreciate your service. Y'all got something? Got to give a speech? You got to give at least a speech before you leave.
I normally don't say much, but, you know, since I'm not a commissioner anymore, no, I just want to say thank you to the other members of the board that I've been privileged to serve with. Mr. French, keep going. Ms. Jamie, good work as always. Just let you know, Jamie keeps everybody very straight and in the know, and a lot of things wouldn't happen without her. I do have mixed emotion, I guess. I've enjoyed the last four years, but a good example of why I decided not to try to do it again is my son has a basketball game at 7:00. And as soon as, as soon as we're finished, I'm heading to Wittenburg. But one thing that I've learned is there are a lot of good people in Alexander County. You know, a lot of people said, you know, when I ran, when I ran four years ago, you know, it was that boy from Bethlehem. 1986, I was in fourth grade, but I'm over 40, so I guess I'm, you know. But until you get into it, you don't realize he was involved, you know, and I'm just, you know, you don't, you don't know Brussels Green. You don't know all these people, and I didn't mean to single them out, but I just saw him back there and thought about it, but you don't realize who all these people are and what they do and how much they benefit my family and your families. But anyway, thank you very much for the recognition and the key. I've asked before, where's the lock? Because we, actually, quite a few people have one of these.
I know, we have to change it every once in a while.
And I keep, and I've asked many times too, do we not need to change the locks? Because we seem, we seem to get these out pretty frequently, and I'm recommending now you probably should.
Okay.
Also, like Josh, I'd like to thank the people that we've been blessed to work with, the group of commissioners, Mr. French, Jamie. You guys have been fantastic to work with. Hearing the folks get swerved in tonight, I wish all the best of you and the best fortune for you and the county. You know, please think about them, because sometimes there are decisions you have to make that maybe aren't popular to all. It's just a part of it. But, you know, I think there's a lot of inner workings that the general public doesn't know about, and until you start getting into it, you don't know, and you think, oh, that should be easy, you just do this. You know, I think there have been some accomplishments. I think there are some economic headwinds that we face as a county that, you know, as a citizen calls me great concern, and, you know, I don't envy you guys for that. That's going to be tough. But there's so many good things, so many good people in Alexander County that we will overcome any obstacle that gets in our way. But again, I just wish good fortune on those that were sworn in today, that things will go well for the next four years for you, and obviously, that's good for the county, and that's the most important thing. And certainly was honored to serve, and unlike Josh, I really didn't have mixed emotions. After eight years on the school board and four years on the commissioner, I'm tired. And I'm old, so, I mean, I just, you know, I think we do need fresh blood from time to time in various capacities in our county. I think you get a different perspective, and I think that's good. But again, I wish all of you the best. Thank you for your support the last four years, and look for great things for Alexander County. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. It's been, you know, I've been with these guys for the last four years, well, and even before, when they were running in the primaries and in the general election. And it's been a pleasure. We have, we've gotten along great. There's no, you know, been no personalities or infighting. There's no, you know, been no personalities or infighting or anything else that has gone on. And we worked really good together. And I'm sure, you know, I've worked with Larry for many years, and we get along great. And Marty, I'm sure we're going to do the same thing. But we all worked really good together, and that's, you know, it's going to be tough to replace that. But these guys are going to do a great job, and they've got big shoes to fill. We appreciate everything that you guys did. And but we're going to miss you. So we'll put you on some boards.
Committees.
A thank you to Josh Milton. Don't have too much fun, you know? It's good. Yeah. I do look forward to serving with, you know, with the new guys here on the board. And like I say, Larry, we've been on the board together before. And Marty will fit right in. We're getting his feet wet already tonight after we get finished with this. We've got some decisions to make, so. But at this time, I'd like to recognize our new House of Representatives, Mr. Jeffrey Elmore. He serves the 94th House District in North Carolina, House of Representatives. Current district is most of Wilkes County and all of Allegheny. The district maps were changed in the 2017, 2018 Biennium. And the 94th District for 2019 and 2020 is now made up of the population centers of Wilkes County and Alexander County. So in the campaign, I got a chance to be with him and served at different places with Mr. Elmore, real good guy, and I think he'll do a fantastic job. He's served as House of Representatives for three terms since his election in 2012. He's co-chair of education, K to 12, and education appropriations, and the vice chairman of appropriations. Prior to his service in government, he was a commissioner in the town of North Wilkesboro, was elected in 2007. Prior to his service as a commissioner, he served on the planning board, chairman of board adjustments, served as president of professional educators in North Carolina, and a whole lot of things here. He grew up in Wilkes County, but we're glad to have him coming over and helping us out here in Alexander. And Mr. Elmore, if you'd come forward, we've got a few words to say. We appreciate your service, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very excited that in the upcoming Biennium with the General Assembly, that the 94th District has shifted to where I'll be representing the people of Alexandria and most of the people of Wilkes County. It's an honor to be able to do that. And this is first of a series of meetings where I'm going to be meeting with the governmental entities here in Alexander to get to know exactly what your issues are at the local level, because truly, all politics are local. And it's just basically an olive branch and a goodwill here. And to just tell you guys that my office door is always open, that the ability of the General Assembly with the research staff and the staff that we have, that many of the questions that you might have, if you need information, information is available. And that it's my role as a conduit with that, to get the information that you need to be able to make the decisions that you need to make. And I just, I'm here tonight to tell you that. And so you understand that we're face to face, that I'm here to help you as much as I possibly can with the decisions that you have to make. And I appreciate your willingness to serve in the role that you are serving in as a county commissioner. It's a very tough spot because many times you're between a rock and a hard place on many of the decisions that you have to make. And as one of the former commissioners said, sometimes you have to make decisions that don't please everybody. But you know, in the long run, it's the best thing that you need to do. So it takes a lot of prayer, it takes a lot of strength and family support. And I'm happy for you, and I appreciate the new school board members that have been sworn in, and I appreciate the two commissioners that are coming off in their work. And great things are happening in Alexander County. When the chairman read the list of all of the things that have been worked on in the past four years, it's extremely exciting. If you went to many counties in our state, they couldn't give you a list that had two of those items on it. So this is a wonderful place, and I appreciate the people. And as I said, my door's always open. I've known some of you for several years, and I'm getting to know some of you better. But feel free to call, and I'm just a phone call away, and Mr. French already knows that. So and don't file too many complaints over the phone, okay? But thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I've had the privilege of knowing Mr. Elmore for a long, long time. And we're certainly fortunate to have him representing us in Raleigh. He's a he's a great guy. He'll do us proud.
And I just want to mention one thing, too. I've known Mr. Elmore for several years myself, probably not as long as Jeff has. But we look forward to working with you. And I just want to say, you don't know how much we appreciate you just coming to a meeting and saying hello. So that's a that's a lot more than we've gotten from some people in the past. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming tonight. This time, is there any commissioner who has a report? Anything you'd like to say? I'll just say I attended the or was in the parade on Saturday, and it was a lot of fun. Had most of the family and the grandkids rode too, and we threw out a whole lot of candy. Was a little wet. A lot of people were still there, though, not not quite as many. But it was, you know, it was a good event. I think Alexander County supports that real good with those that are attending the floats and all those things. But just a good event, a lot of people getting seen that might not have been seen. So but I thank Duane and his crowd for putting that on. Anyone else have anything you'd like to report?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was at the LAPC meeting the other day, and they gave a report, the sheriff's office and the Department of Corrections. And I'd just like to say thanks to them for crazy things that they have to deal with, you know, the inciting of terror a few weeks ago through the schools and throughout the county, and they handled things in a in the school system as well in a very professional way and got to the bottom of things. And, you know, I said the other day that a lot of people don't want to realize it, but we we have a lot of bad people. And fortunately, a lot of them are incarcerated, and we have to and we have to deal with them. And those guys see that every single day. So I'd just like to publicly say that I appreciate what they do.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention one thing. We just lost one of our greatest presidents a few days ago, George Herbert Walker Bush. And we need to keep the family in our prayers and thoughts. And he wasn't an exciting president, but he was he was steady, honorable, trustworthy, a war hero, just a man of integrity. And what you would want out of, you know, that's what you'd want your kids to grow up to be, just like George Bush. And we just need to remember that, our country does. He was a special person and one of a kind. So just wanted to mention that.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Remember the Bush family? And I got to watch a little bit of it on TV today, some of the things going on, and kind of impressed me. He was had a pretty large family. They was actually getting on the plane to make the trip, and they were talking about, you know, his family. And also, his his dog was right there. And they they showed a picture, maybe some others have seen it. Dog was laying in front of the casket when it was in Texas, I guess, at his home. So, you know, he'll be missed. You know, now he kind of come up through the ranks, you know, I guess, old school, but but he'll be missed. But do remember that family. Next item would be adoption of the agenda, and there's some corrections to the agenda. Will be removing items related to the 911 call handling, equipment purchase. That's item number four. And also, item number six, the approval of the contract, along with the budget amendment number three. This is due to staff locating an alternative source for the equipment after this agenda was published. And that will result in, it's always, Josh is not in here, but he always liked, if it doesn't cost us any money, that's a good thing. So this will be no cost to the county. And we're going to add Dan Shabaldine of Shabaldine Engineering. He will be item number four for an update on the Bethlehem sewer. And we're going to add fire housing complaint procedure under the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for those changes and the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to go through all of them, so I make a motion that we make those changes, as you stated.
All right. Have a motion, they have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Being none, I'd entertain a vote of approval. All raise your right hand, it's in favor. Okay? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item number one is public comment. And I'll just go through the the thing, we do this every time when someone's coming to speak, so everybody's on the same page. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It's not a time for the board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. The time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning. The length of comment for each speaker, if there's more than one, is limited to three minutes. And select one spokesperson. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to individuals. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the board during public comment shall call the clerk to the board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. And I'll recognize Ms. Betty Long for the community meeting announcement. Mrs. Long, thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, and Ms. Starnes. I am Betty Long, and I represent the Bethlehem Community Planning Committee. This committee was appointed by the previous Board of Commissioners to work with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to develop a recommended plan for the Bethlehem community. On Tuesday, December the 18th, at 6:00 PM at Mount Pisgah Lutheran Church in Bethlehem, a public meeting will be held, and you are invited to attend. The reason for this meeting will be to give public, give the public an understanding of the purpose of the Bethlehem Planning Committee and to answer any questions. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Everyone remember that. Moving on to item number two will be the election of a board chairman. Do I have a nomination for a board chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Commissioner Jeff Peel as chairman.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, being none. All in favor of Commissioner Peel being our chairman? Raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Peel, you're the chair chairman. That'll be starting in January at our next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is election of a board vice chairman. I would entertain a nomination for a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ronnie Reese for our board vice chairman.
All right. Any other nominations? Okay, being none, we'll place a vote on the vice chairman. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And like I say, those will be taking effect in January. And thank each one there. Moving on to our next item, number four, will be Dan Shabaldine with an update on the Bethlehem sewer project. If you'd come forward, sir. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, and Ms. Starnes. I'm Dan Shabaldine, Shabaldine Engineering. And we've got the privilege of working with the county on the Bethlehem sewer project. It's an exciting project, exciting project for Bethlehem, and I don't know how many other people will think sewer is exciting, but this in this case it is. Just to give you a brief update on where we are, the county received a letter of intent to fund back in August. We came aboard shortly after that response to RFQ. The first step was the engineering report that was due back in December. We submitted the engineering report, excuse me, and it was approved in May. And we started the preliminary design, the design phase of the project last spring. Our first deadline, according to the letter of intent, was, excuse me, November 1st, 2018, for the bid package and design submittal. We met that deadline. The state has the plans for the project, and it's in review now. Also, we've submitted plans to the city for their review as well. But the project includes, just quickly, about 2,000 feet of 15-inch gravity, 6,012-inch gravity, and about 11,000 feet of 8-inch gravity, 12,000 feet of forced main, upgrade to the Heritage Village Pump Station and the Wittenburg Springs Pump Station, and a new pump station on Bowman Court. The Bowman Court Project Pump Station is has been moved. We spent some time working with the landowner there and finding an appropriate location for that pump station. It was up on Bowman Court, a little further north of Twin Coves. It's been since moved down, down past the intersection of Twin Coves, onto that Bruce Alexander property and that general area. The letter of intent was, the Cleanwater State Revolving Fund was for $5,181,300. Of course, you know, the breakdown of that is some interesting. But when we went through the design, we got more specific, we had more quantities. We actually ended up with what we had submitted to the state this past November was about $4.5 million. So we're under the approved amount. But and that's for two reasons. One is, of course, we have more detailed data, more detailed design. We've we also changed the route slightly, but I don't think that was a major factor in the in the cost estimate. If you look, we added, since the initial request for funding, we added Shiloh Church Road and Rink Dam Road, the little triangular area there just north of Rink Dam Road. We also had on 127 from Mount Pisgah north, we had intended to go up to Gene Moretz Road. Unfortunately, because of the existing grades, we started getting too shallow with the sewer line, so we had to stop about S and K. So we shortened that a little bit there, so it balanced out between those two. We added a little bit there for Shiloh Church and Rink Dam and cut some off there on 127. One of the biggest changes, I think, on the project, and I think is beneficial to the project, is Chigger Ridge. When the original funding, we had Chigger Ridge coming down, and it was about, oh, a couple thousand feet down from Rink Dam Road, heading south, and then we're going to start going cross-country, tying and hitting 127 there, just north of the Evans Drug and the little fruit stand that's there, where the apartments are going in, just between that area. We looked at that, and what that was going to do is we're going to end up being extremely deep, going underneath 127, probably 20, 30 feet deep. By the time we got to Shiloh Church Road, it was going to be about 15 to 20 feet deep just starting out at Shiloh Church. What we opted to do is continue down Chigger Ridge instead. And where Chigger Ridge turns and heads east and goes up the hill, we're going to go cross-country just off that corner to knock off the little high spot there in Chigger Ridge and come down and actually go cross-country by Evans Drug. So we'll be coming out pretty much right at the south side of Evans Drugs at the 127 intersection of Shiloh Church. At that point, we're only going to be about seven feet deep, which is definitely manageable. It does get deep as we go down Shiloh Church, considerably deep by the time we get to Wildlife Access Road. And then we're going to be tying, following the route and tying back in at the pump station. In order to do the project, we're going to have to have some easements, some temporary construction easements as well, some permanent easements. Couple of the challenges are that several of the manholes are going to be what I would consider deep. There'll be three of them will be about 20 feet. There'll be, three of them will be about 20 feet deep, so it'll be an exercise to construct. I've talked to contractors. It's nothing they haven't done before, so it's doable. But in order to serve the area, that's just the way the elevations worked out. So we'll be kind of deep, going down at the top of Chigger Ridge and then at Wildlife Access, and then where we turn to go down to the boat ramp, so. But overall, it's going really well. We're working with the county attorney on the easements. We've got all the survey done, and, well, we're still missing a little bit there on Chigger Ridge because we changed the route. But other than that, it's, I think it's going really well, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. A lot of good information, so are we still looking at kind of the same data as before, or what?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. According to the letter of intent to fund, we met our deadline in November to submit the bid package. They've got until March to final approval. We may have a round of comments in between that date, but right now, we're looking at March 1st for approval of the bid package. Would be advertising, according to their letter, advertising and submitting bid information and receiving authority to award July 1st. Execute contracts for construction August 1st. So we're still on schedule.
All right. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming tonight. Any other questions?
Yeah, so, and I know, you know, I've spoken quite a bit about this, but are we pretty certain on route now that, you know, there's not going to be any more changes like on, you know, Chigger Ridge and that sort of thing? You think we're pretty set?
I think we're set, yes. I mean, as far as from the engineering side, we've engineered it, and it's done.
Well, I just mean, yeah, I mean, we've had to change a little bit on Heritage Farm Road and just a few little things here and there, and, you know...
Yeah, and I may add, on Heritage Farm, there was a couple of changes there. During the, during the submittal for the loan application, that project also had the line going cross-country. I don't have a good landmark for it, but it was going cross-country over to Heritage Farm, Heritage Village Pump Station. And we had looked at taking it to the north side to try to stay on the right-of-way as much as we could, so we're going to go around to the north side of Heritage Village. But looking at it a little bit closer and doing some fieldwork, we decided that we'll go up to Alexander Heritage Road, down Alexander Heritage Road to an existing manhole. Essentially, you don't lose any service area, and it's more of a straight shot, so that may be one of the other reasons why we, you know, were able to keep the costs down.
It's going to tie into that manhole, and that's what Commissioner Peel and myself were talking about. It's going to tie into that manhole and then down to that pump station that's located in Alexander Heritage, and then back over to pump down that way, back over to Wittenburg Springs.
Yeah, tying into the manhole, and as the sewer line coming out of that manhole runs behind those lots over to the pump station.
Dan, your proposed pump stations, are they up to the level of just supporting what's on the drawing currently or for future tie-ins or not?
Well, the project's been designed for future development. And it's hard to predict what's going to happen, I mean, obviously, you know, in the future, but to the best of our abilities, we've looked at the land available and estimated some densities. So those pump stations are going to be upgraded to handle future capacity.
Okay. We actually did spend quite a bit of time on that and trying to figure out what's going to be there in the future, but it's still got to work today. So if you get it too large, then it actually doesn't work, so.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other question? All right. Appreciate the report.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out again. Thank you.
All right.
Moving on to item number five, will be budget ordinance amendments number 21 through 22 now. I'd recognize Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number 21 is to increase the library budget regarding the donations received for purchase, purchase of book drop at Bethlehem Branch Library, adult books purchases, and audiovisual purchase. Also, number 22 is to budget a $1,000 sponsorship for the Celtic Christmas concert presented to, by Studio 3 Music School. That matches the donation that the town made.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. French. Entertain a motion to approve those amendments.
I'd make a motion to approve them.
All right. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Being no discussion, I'd entertain a vote to approve. Raise your right hand. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to our next item will be number seven, well, actually, number six, yeah, excuse me. Designate a voting delegate for our Legislative Goals Conference, and that conference is January 10 to 11 in Raleigh.
Is anybody going? I have not even thought one thing about it.
I'm going. Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Okay. I may be able to go, but I'll have to check and see.
Whoever's going will be...
Yeah, I think that's who we need to, Mr. French, Rick, is. Are you going, too?
Yes, sir. I'll go.
Not on January 10. Okay. Are you, you're not positive you're going? Well, I would say that we need to...
Larry?
Yeah.
Let me double-check here something real quick.
Yeah, it's a two-day trip, I think.
Yes, sir.
January 10th to 11th. And there is voting, you know, for each county, and, you know, that's why we need to delegate, you know, the person that we know is going to be there, so.
Yes, I will be committed.
Okay. I make a motion, and we give the voting delegate to Commissioner Larry Yoder.
Second that motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. Yoder, you're it, sir. Thank you. And moving on to our next item will be our board appointments and reappointments. Recognize county manager Rick French once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointments for the Health Board, reappoint Jennifer Hall for three years, Macy Jones for three years. Local Emergency Planning Committee, reappoint Steve Eisenhower two years, Micah Hendry, John McCurdy, Keith Hertzler, and Commissioner Jeff Peel. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, reappoint Douglas Howell for three years.
Everyone's heard those appointments. Some of those people I know. I think it will be a good group. I would entertain a motion to approve those as stated for accounting appointments.
Make a motion that we approve the nominations as submitted.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions pertaining to those, to those persons? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And moving on to our next item is county manager's report. I'd recognize Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have some information in front of you tonight. One piece of information concerns the monthly report from the Alexander County Building Inspections, and again, things continue to move along very, very well, very positive report. County sales tax report, just want to talk about that a few minutes. In this report from the state of North Carolina, statewide growth was 2.7%. Regular county sales tax collected for three months, and our sales tax dollars run a couple months behind, or at $1,171,965, which represents almost 25% of the budget collected, and 25% of the budget has expired. And the budget, the amount of money we budgeted for our local sales tax revenue was $4,698,000. We also have what we call new sales tax, which is restricted, and we've collected $390,211, which again is a little over 25%, with 25% of the year completed. The budget for that is $1,520,000. But just to give you an idea about sales tax statewide, and we've talked about this before, but for the last month, Alexander County collected, and if you include the town with this, we collected over $700,000. Now, again, part of that was collected by the town. If you look at some of our surrounding counties, at the amount of sales taxes that they collect, in Burke County, if you count what the county collects and all the surrounding towns, they collect $1.8 million. If you look at Catawba County, they collect $4.6 million, and that's for one month. Colwell collects $1.8 million. And just Davie County, we always, a lot of times, we compare ourselves to them, a little over $800,000. Mecklenburg County for the same time period was over $43 million of sales tax for one month. That's more than our budget. One other one, Iredal County for that same time period was $4.3 million. So just, I want to mention those things. Also, in front of you, you have the budget calendar for 2019 through 2020. We wanted to start a little bit earlier this year of getting this information out to department heads, and you have a budget calendar based on, with different dates, with different submittals. We would, the budget information would be emailed to all the county department heads in February, and then really, it starts with technology requests, and then we have the twenty-year committees you'll need to report, appoint, would be the Finance Committee, and they'll be meeting with elected officials like the registered deeds and sheriff, and also with the schools. And then you have a step-by-step process, and just want to give you that for the upcoming budget, with the adoption of the budget anticipated to be June 17th, which is our second meeting in June. I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone has. I've got a couple of things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. French. Yeah, the budget thing will be starting pretty quick, and, you know, I think it's good to wait it's laid out here. Gives us some time to, you know, take a look at them.
Mr. French, will some of those meetings, and they're later, will department heads present?
Yes, sir. We hope that we can have the Finance Committee meeting with them, some of the different, bigger departments, even some of the smaller ones, that they desire to do that, and then we'll have a work session with commissioners, have several meetings where they'll make presentations, and you can ask questions, but that's the process that we have so far.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Keep your calendars open. Be a busy time.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't believe it's almost budget time again. Yay!
Yeah, seemed like we just finished it. Is that all you have, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda with the addition of the fair housing complaint procedure. I'd entertain a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the additions that, of the fair housing complaints.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think everyone's had plenty of time to take a look at them in their books, so no questions. Vote of approval by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Carries unanimously. At this time, we will go into closed session regarding per NCGS 14331811 for contractual and personnel items. I'd entertain, I make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a second. At this time, we'll be in closed session. We will read adjourn only for the purpose of adjournment. Thank you.